With our second part of the agenda tonight. And that is the Student Assignment Transition Plan for 2017-18. I also wanted to note for the record that earlier in the evening Director Pat To join us. So we have all seven board directors here. And I guess I'll hand the mic over to Associate Superintendent Hurnden.
Good evening. Yes, I'm Flip Hurnden, Associate Superintendent of Facilities and Operations. So for this portion on the student assignment plan, this is really a continued conversation from the one started last week on the action item in the agenda on the student assignment plan. I'm sure you all recall the beginning of the conversations around the amendments. And I just wanted to have Noel Treat talk very briefly about the kind of sequence of this and what it means for tonight.
Yeah, just as a reminder, and to the Noel Treat, General Counsel, as a reminder, and for the public here tonight, just this is a continuation of the discussion you had at your regular meeting last Wednesday. It was decided there to postpone action to the special meeting here tonight. So of course, you have before you both the main motion approving the transition plan, student assignment plan, along with several amendments. And as you recall from other recent matters, you will work through the amendments one by one. And you will make the amendment, the motion for the amendment, discuss it, and then vote on that amendment before moving to the next amendment. And then after you're done with that, you'll circle back and then vote on the main motion as amended. And I'm here if questions or issues come up along the way.
So I think with that, we'll go back to the original motion, and then it sounds like discussion, working through each of the amendments. And of course, Ashley and myself are here to answer any follow-up questions you may have.
Do we need to introduce the motion? Okay.
Yes, that would be the first step is the main motion, and then you can move into discussion and amendments.
This is the approval of the student assignment transition plan for 2017-18. Do I hear a motion?
Yes. Move for the approval of this item which would approve the student assignment plan dated November 8, 2016.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, we can open this up for discussion, questions about the overall plan. Does anybody have any questions about any aspect of the plan? I see Director Pat To and then Director Burke.
So what are we voting on right now? What amendment are we looking at?
Right now, we're going to start, we're just going to talk about the whole plan. And then we'll move on to the amendments once we feel we've -- because this is starting off as a work session, so we still have a chance to discuss the whole thing before we get to the amendments. Director Burke?
Process question, and then a couple of comments. I want to try to reflect back what I think I heard. So we are, under Robert's rules now, we are under a motion. Our discussion is supposed to be focused on the main motion. And so what is in order on that? We should not be focusing on the amendments until they're introduced? But if there are other topics that are not covered under the amendments, would this be the place?
Actually, you have quite a bit of, you have pretty wide discretion as to how you want to conduct discussion and at what point you want to raise issues or questions. There's not a really fixed hard rule about that. When you get to the amendments, you should try and confine your discussion to that amendment in particular. But at this stage, before amendments are made, really, you could pretty broadly talk about any aspect of this that you want to raise now.
Okay, I'll start with something super general, just around process. Because I know that for the directors, and especially for the public, the student assignment plan and boundaries process has been painful. It's inherently a painful process every year when we have a significant number of changes. And even a small number of changes can be really painful for the families that are affected. And so my ask is that, recognizing that this is a process we go through every year, that we take a look holistically at the process. And if we can try to break the mold a little bit from our existing sequence, which involves developing a recommendation, going through a public engagement cycle, and then going through board review, which has the possibility of creating amendments, if we can go through a board introduction earlier, followed by public review, so that that public review time period can incorporate any initial board feedback or amendments. So we actually separate introduction and action by a public outreach period. That's one of my requests. The other one is that we combine boundaries and student assignment plan. And I know that in the past, they were done together, and that they were actually separated because of some of the complexities. But the functionality of boundaries and the functionality of how we direct students to operate within those boundaries, or how they're assigned within those boundaries, are things that are connected at the hip. And I think that we owe it to our community to figure out how to communicate that in a coherent way. So those are my two high-level requests.
And can we just make a correction? So in the original motion, it was read as dated November 8. But on the updated bar, it's actually dated December 22. I just want to make sure we're accurate.
So move.
And so seconded.
Director Harris and then Director Geary, I think?
The segue then from what Director Burke had to say. Hopefully, by the time that we do the next revised student assignment plan, we will have a community engagement feedback tool, which should help us a great deal. I know it's certainly one of my priorities, and I believe it's a priority of senior staff here at the district. Because without that, we hear from the loudest, the best organized, and we're not doing as good a job as we can. The other piece would be, it's the board members' rights to make amendments to policy. It's a statutorily granted right and job. And I've seen some emails, frankly, that are rude, insulting, inaccurate, inappropriate, accusing folks of nefarious ethics. And it's my hope that one of the things that we can do is do a better job as the board and staff of getting feedback from the potential pitfalls of some of these. Also, to have more staff support in doing things like the race and equity tool. Because a board member brings forth an amendment, I'm not sure it's particularly fair to ask board members that are volunteers to be doing their own research and to be doing their own analysis when you folks are the experts in the business. So I think we can do a lot of better things next year and get this down to a real collaboration. And in terms of some of the cleanup issues, if there's a cleanup issue that's created by an amendment, is it true that a board member needs to address the cleanup issue? Or can we say to staff, can you address Area 93 or whatever number it is? It's a process question or comment more than anything. And last, even though this process has been really, really painful, thank you for being responsive to those emails and to telling us if we're misinterpreting or misunderstanding. I'd like to see even more candid feedback in the past. Because conflict's not a bad thing if we get to a better place.
Just a quick answer on the cleanup. Sometimes the conflict could be a conflict that requires board action on both sides. So for instance, if there is an amendment that is in conflict, and this gets to Director Burke's comment earlier, to an earlier board-voted agenda item that set a boundary, and now an amendment alters that boundary, then it makes it, we can't probably clean that up in a way that wouldn't require a board vote. Not all the time. Sometimes we can clean those things up. But if there is conflict that requires a board vote, then we have to figure out the best way to do that.
But can we flag it and say, I see a potential pitfall problem here? How do you want to address it?
Yes. Yes, we can do that.
Director Geary?
Okay, I agree with Director Burke's comment in terms of allowing us to build in more time and maybe combining boundaries and student assignment plan. And I'm hoping that with the introduction and training on our new planning tool, that that will be a much smoother process for us all to engage in the conversations around both of those issues at one time. Because it seems to have been really ineffective to try and keep it all in your head as to how it rolls out under one scenario or another as you're trying to make all these disjointed decisions. Right now, I'm not in favor of approving the student assignment plan, and that has in large part to do with just the creation of, I don't think that is the correct tool to use to create a self-contained program in Decatur. I think it has unfairly put that movement on your department when that is something that should have been a much greater discussion. And I understand that from your perspective, you are taking care of the logistics of how we have previously structured our district. But it's growing something that I think has been shown to be inequitable as you apply it over our whole district. And so, you know, if it was my druthers, we'd be looking at opening advanced learning opportunity schools in, option schools in, as I said before, Cedar Park and Decatur, opening enrollment. We would satisfy the law by offering the type of education that the law requires, but not necessarily only allowing certain kids access to it. And hopefully, that would open up, because I think there are a lot of parents that would think that their students would benefit from those opportunities that are left behind in the way that we have structured it. And while we say that we're offering everything in every school because we allow certain kids that would provide the passion to those kinds of curriculums to siphon off into our HCC, it leaves the kids who would also benefit from that cohort, let's say, not getting access to what it brings. So I have a fundamental problem with that. So my third point would be that I want the notice, I think that we need, seeing the public come over and over again with allegations and beliefs of broken promises, I would like us to be very clear in our communications to the public that we are still in flux in terms of trying to manage our capacity issues around certain areas, and also trying to manage the equitable delivery of our education models to all of our kids. And that that may require some real reshaping and rethinking. Because I think what we have are some structural problems within the school district that are contributing to the opportunity gap and the achievement gap. As I see that we are not providing the same kind of opportunities. We've created a structure that doesn't appeal to all of our different populations, that they don't feel welcome in it, and yet they need access to advanced learning opportunities. And when I say that, I also want to always reemphasize that that means academic, intellectual, and creative. And I don't think we're hitting on all of those. So I, from my personal, I will, my personal perspective is I will continue to work on changing this. But that means that our public needs to be on notice that changes could be coming further, and that should this plan get passed tonight, then there may be another plan next year after we have the benefit of all the things that I've talked about. So I just put, I just throw that out.
Well, I'll step in here for a minute. I do recall, well, first of all, I agree with Directors Burke and Geary, that more lead time on these big decisions would be helpful for the board and for the public. And then as far as bringing the student assignment plan and growth boundaries together, I believe staff did do that once before. And it was considered too much to handle at once, I think. And so this time, they brought it to us in two different pieces. And this is the previous board experience, what I just described, so that this is just historical knowledge. So I think we have to figure out which is the right way to go, and what are the necessary supports and steps we need to make whatever choice we do work best for everybody. These are big topics. It affects so many families, and there's so many pieces to the puzzle. So we all want to make the right decisions. And it's hard to know, and it's also hard to know what the impact is on some of them. Couple of questions that I have have to do with the uncertainty of what we're looking at. Because no matter what we decide tonight, we're not really going to know what, who's going to be in our two new middle schools until after open enrollment. And so that concerns me alongside the fact that we apparently have no mitigation funds for these schools. So that's what's been sort of keeping me up at night, is how to get these two schools running in a way where we can offer our students as much as we possibly can. And is this the right year for we do, to be doing this sort of thing? But there is no other way really for us to plan. I mean, this is a growing city, a growing district. We were finally opening buildings rather than closing buildings. And it just so happens, we're opening two buildings in a year when we have to take a look at serious budget cuts. So no matter what we decide tonight, I really would like assurances from staff and from the superintendent that we will put a really sharp focus on these two schools and make sure we do everything we can to give these schools the resources that they need. And that this was part of the concerns that drove my amendment, and we haven't gotten to that yet, and nor do we need to get to that just yet. I just wanted to put that out there. Are there any other overall comments about the student assignment plan? Director Harris?
I don't know if this is a question for you, for General Counsel Treat, and/or for Chief Jessie, but the language regarding special ed placement, has that been changed or ameliorated because we've heard a great deal from the special ed community?
Well, in the most recent exchange that I had with Chief Jessie, and also with our legal counsel, I'm not sure if we totally resolved it. It got down to wanting to change two specific words on page 54 and 53, I believe, of the student assignment plan. And what I was suggesting was we delete the word "capacity" and that we delete the word "greater." And this is coming to me from the special ed community that would like more predictability for their students. They would like their students to have the same rights that other students have. And just removing these two words is believed will show that we recognize that these students deserve the same level of predictability that we can possibly offer. And so I would still like to make those changes. And this being also a work session, we could ostensibly make those changes, is my understanding. Wyatt Jessie, did you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Director Peters. Again, Wyatt Jessie, Chief of Student Support Services. And I just would like to, again, since we had a correspondence via email, Director Peters, I'll just kind of outline that for everyone here. Is this around when we're thinking about students and their IEPs? On their IEPs, back, it talks about the setting in which they'll get an education. In that setting, oftentimes, talk about ratios. Is it, you know, small group setting? What's the staffing ratio is the way we would be looking at how that configuration would look? So then we calculate that, what we call least restrictive environment. It's a calculation we have to do by law for the individual IP, but also for the state. We report on it. And it's actually something that we're working on as a district as we report that. The reason I state that is the significance of it. Because by law, we have to put them in an environment where, as the individual plan says where they're at. If we were to not consider capacity and to think about how many classrooms we have designated for the small group space, we could easily run afoul of an issue where we have too many students who need specific services in a specific, you know, kind of environment because it is down to our case managers in special ed who have specialized skills. They can, they are the ones that are going to instruct students on those skills. And again, using this scenario here with the small group, we run out of those spaces. And if we were to just simply put more students in there, we would no longer be looking at a, at a least restrictive environment, or most certainly looking at what we're looking at as far as a small group setting. And this is something that happens a lot during the testing period. When we tried to test, they say, "small group," and all the students need "small group." All of a sudden, you have a lot of students in a room as we look forward. And then I know Flip could always talk about capacity, but why that also impacts just what we have available at our schools.
Would it be possible to put up the language on those pages that I'm referring to? Is it part of this slide?
Yeah, it should be in attachment.
This reflects the most up-to-date. So from introduction on December 7, there have been updates, and that is what this version is right in front of us.
I think we need to go down just a little bit more. Let's see, okay. All right, well, two of them. In the last paragraph here, "the students who are eligible for other special education continuum services," one of them, there's a sentence that says, finishes with, "and provide greater assignment predictability." Do we need the word "greater"? Can we just say, "provide assignment predictability"? And this may not seem like an important issue, but to the special ed community, it means that we're more committed to predictability when we don't modify our nouns that way. Is there any problem with deleting "greater"?
This is one of those preference things. Just as clarity, I'm almost looking at legal counsel just because it gets down to technical language. And I think I'd rather have him start there.
Yeah, Noel Treat, General Counsel, again. No, I don't, I mean, I don't see a legal concern about deleting the word "greater" from that, from that sentence. One procedural thing to point out, though, is given that we are here for action tonight, if you want to propose a change, you will have to do that by a motion.
By motion, okay. All right.
And I do have, though, a concern, when we get to it, that I can talk a little bit about, about the idea of deleting the word "capacity." There is something to think about there.
Okay, now that I've found it on the page, I'll explain it, and then you can explain your concern. So the very last two sentences, "these assignments are in alignment with approved boundaries and feeder patterns to the extent possible, depending on capacity, proximity, and individual service needs." So that's the place where I'm suggesting we delete the word "capacity." I mean, for two reasons. One, it's understood in general that everything depends on capacity in this district. It applies to all students. So to specify it here seems to be unnecessary. And then because it says "to the extent possible," and we're talking about proximity and service needs, that we are offering the modifiers and the flexibility that staff requires in terms of making these decisions. So these are the two suggestions that I have. Director Geary?
I don't see any problem with the word "greater." I do understand that capacity doesn't affect our stu, these students because capacity doesn't necessarily affect a student's right to go to their neighborhood assignment school. But because of our need to actually provide very, very defined services to a student under the legal obligation of the IEP, the capacity does take on a different meaning with regard to serving these students. So I understand that difference. The "greater," I don't think that there would be any problem from my perspective on that. But the capacity one, I agree with the legal analysis. And then I did hear from the, or I contacted the president of the Special Ed PTSA, and I'm not entirely sure of Hannah Marzinski's role or involvements now, but she was very much an integral part of the Special Ed Task Force. And neither of those people indicated that they had any amendments to make to this language at all at this point, just to give a broader perspective of what the community, feedback that I sought out from the community.
I did get my feedback from members of CAC, you know, and longtime members of the special ed community. And these are issues that actually have come up every single year. Every single year, the special ed community tells us they feel that the student assignment plan does not adequately commit to predictability for their students in the same way it does for other students.
Yeah, the only, I agree with the comments that were made about the importance of capacity in assigning students for special education services. I know the intent here, based on what you said and what we've discussed earlier today, isn't to eliminate capacity as a consideration, but to try and add greater parity between how people see the plan treating special education students versus other students. The thing, though, that I would caution is that because capacity is an important, a very important consideration for special education services, that the deletion of the word here could be interpreted by some to mean, and by a court potentially, because courts usually presume that legislative changes have a substantive effect. So there could be an argument created then that if you delete capacity here, that we might face where a parent or family who didn't get the exact assignment they wanted could argue, hey, you used, you based your decision on capacity. The board eliminated the word "capacity" from the plan. That means you can't use capacity as a criteria or a factor. So I do worry about that. So if, if the board were to proceed with deleting this word, I would want them, I would, I could help you craft some language on the motion to amend, but I would want it to be clear that you're not suggesting we can't still use capacity for assignment.
You want some hold harmless language for General Counsel?
But just because I think we want to be clear, we don't want, we don't want this deletion to later be read as meaning the board indicated you can't consider capacity for this assignment. Because I think we need to.
Is that not covered by the language "to the extent possible"?
Well, it could be, but the problem is now, we've got a document that historically has this word in it. So the court, a court looking at a legislative change like this would say, well, if you eliminated that word, that had, that had some kind of substantive meaning, and it must have meant you didn't want capacity considered. That's one potential argument or interpretation I think could flow from making that amendment. Even though, standing alone without the history of deleting the word, you could say, well, to the extent possible gives us wide discretion to consider any number of factors. But having, you know, proactively taken one word out could suggest an intent that it not be considered. So that's, that's just, I think, some risk you would face in a potential legal challenge down the road.
Well, if I were to make a motion to strike the word "greater," I just need to say that and ask for a second?
Yeah, you, you could, you could, yeah, you would need to make a motion to strike the word "greater" from, just to be specific. You might say from Section 3A, third paragraph, just of, of the, let's see, what are we calling this? Do you have the other? Yeah, of the, yeah, of the December 22nd Student Assignment Transition Plan.
Remember that I make a motion to strike the word "greater" from Section 3A of the Student Transition Assignment Plan?
Student Assignment Transition.
Student Assignment Transition Plan.
I'd second that motion.
Yeah, so now you essentially have, you have a motion to amend, the main motion, based on this, on this change.
And then do we, at this point, did anyone want to discuss it, or do we just go ahead and vote on it?
It's, this would be the point where if anyone wants to say anything or ask you a question, that would happen.
I just wanted to, because the, the conversation went around a little bit, I just want confirmation again from staff that this, you see this as a, as a neutral change from your perspective, and I think that's what I heard. I'm just looking for confirmation of that.
Yeah, it's, it's more stylistic than, I think, substantive, yeah.
Okay, it sounds like, yeah. All right, Director Blanford?
Let me try to add a little specificity. Is it operationally neutral? Because it seems to me that it is, by removing the modifier, it has the potential to make it more operationally difficult. Is that, and I could be way off base here. And I'm not asking you to say one side or the other. I'm asking you to more predict how difficult or how easier it will be to actually move this language into operation.
Yep, so, for the question, so I, I did, again, this is somewhat under interpretation. And that's why I tend to go for, when I go to the gray, I don't tend to have usually a lot of opinion on it. Choice, I have a lot. Greater, I don't, only in this, and I don't think it's just to say, yeah, the Link Schools chart does provide assignment predictability for most. And then there's some other language that follows it, as we have unique services that are only located at very few schools. DHH comes, for example, at Tops and Roosevelt. So that's in the plan. That plan does have historical elements to it and would be, help provide that guidance. So I don't think that provides, really, to me, any significant change to it. It's under interpretation. If it's individual, if it did provide greater assignment predictability for you or not, and it might not for all. So that's why, I think, maybe that's why it was asked. But I don't even know the intent, so. Does that help?
And yeah, and I, and I would agree with that interpretation. This statement is more just an explanation as to why we, we do the online posting in the first place. So I don't see it as a, as substantively mandating some change in our practices.
So is this the right point to vote on the
Yes.
this amendment, okay. Ms. Ritchie, the roll, roll call, please.
Director Blanford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkum?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
The motion to amend has passed unanimously.
Right, are there any other questions or comments about the general student assignment plan before we move on to the amendments? Okay. Oh, Ashley Davies. Sorry, Ashley.
So I wanted to bring up just two small things in terms of the language, one of which there was an email earlier in regards to the addition of NOVA as an alternative learning experience school and being designated in that category in the additional appendix that we have added in the updated student assignment plan. So initially, when we brought this to introduction, we had talked about NOVA transitioning from, it's currently an option school, and it abides by the option school timelines, and us moving to NOVA to have some more flexibility in those timelines and to have that school be more accessible to more of our students who may have particular needs that aren't met in a traditional high school. And so with that initial introduction of the student assignment plan, we had said that NOVA was transitioning to, from an option school to a service school. And so that language is written in there as a service school. But with the addition of the appendix of the alternative learning experience schools and moving those four ALEs to that section, we would just like to make an update to that language that references us transitioning NOVA from an option school to a service school to saying, NOVA will be moving from an option school, from being categorized to an option school to being listed in the alternative learning experience school section. It has actually always been an ALE, because I was previously approved by the board. So it doesn't, again, change any of its offerings or the way students are learning or experiencing the programming there. But just wanted to say that for the record because we did want to make that update to clean that up.
Director Blanford?
And, and to that, I appreciate that change and that, that clarification. Does it meet the, the concerns voiced by the principal of the school? Because I know that NOVA has a very rich history of not meeting its enrollment targets when it first comes out, but consistently meeting them over time. And so does this, does that clarification that you just shared with us pass muster with him?
So the, the clarification actually doesn't make any change in terms of his perception of the change. That initial move from an option school to having the flexibility and the timeline from no longer being an option school is what allows more flexibility in students enrolling past that open enrollment and school choice date. So yes, that will give him access to more students throughout the year.
Excellent, thank you.
I had one other thing, but I didn't know if you wanted to discuss that first, and then I can mention my other thing.
Go ahead.
And then on, I imagine, so in one of the other small changes we wanted to make, so there, in the tiebreaker section, there, it says formerly spectrum. And so initially, we had some language that had said formerly spectrum, but we just want to take out the formerly and just make sure it just reads spectrum. So it'll just read spectrum rather than formerly spectrum, and that's consistent with all the other instances within the document.
So by that, do you mean that it is still called spectrum?
Yes, that means we are still calling it spectrum in this document, because the other references are still spectrum.
So are these changes that you are making now, or you're just drawing our attention to changes that have been made? And do we need an amendment for these changes?
I don't necessarily think we need an amendment to the, I mean, these are what we would consider cleanup of language. And typically, we don't need a, an amendment for the cleanup of language. It changes none of the intent, programming, or anything of the document itself. It's, it's essentially just cleaning up some of these small language pieces.
Thank you.
Consistency, yes. So I don't, I don't necessarily know that, I don't believe we would need an amendment. I just wanted to call it to the attention so that it was recognized that this would be something that we were just going to update.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments, or should we move on to the amendments? Superintendent Allen?
Ashley, or Philip, do you, do either of you have the costs for the amendments as we get ready to move into that conversation? So I believe, I'm not remembering from before, I believe that two of them had greater costs than some of the others. And as we completed our discussion on the budget, I hear you, that you want to go forward with Cedar Park, and you don't want to cut curriculum. That means that we've got part of that 11 million to still fill. And then I'm very concerned about anything that we do to add to the whole. So I, I heard the conversation about saying that we're good with moving forward with WSS. But if we can't get the 11 million somewhere else, then we're going to have to come back to staff at some point.
Yes, so one of the attachments on this agenda does have the fiscal cost. So there's a two-page fiscal cost piece on there. So for Amendment 1, the cost was, estimated cost on transportation is approximately 154,000. There's the possibility of 432,000 in mitigation, staff mitigation funds. And then there was a cost depending on the number of portables, which we don't have yet. But that's kind of a, a budget of approximately 180,000 per portable. So that was for Amendment 1. For Amendment 2, the fiscal note on that is approximately $77,000. Amendment 3 had been withdrawn. Amendment 4, the approximate, oh, sorry, Amendment 4 was withdrawn. Amendment 5, the, we don't have a fiscal note on that, but we, yeah, it's just about an, an allocation of space, so there wasn't a fiscal note on that.
Director Patu?
Actually, I wanted to ask you some question on that, on that number five. Can you tell me exactly the seven rooms that is assigned to Lipton Spring? Is that seven room actually is going to fit the programs that are actually at Lincoln, which is 14 rooms with the special ed program?
Yeah, so I think we had tried to answer this one before. So on the two, and I, I believe I sent out a, kind of a floor plan of the, of first two levels. So based on the number of students in there, we believe they would fit in the space allocation that we have. There are some common spaces, some classrooms, and two science lab-sized classrooms. So there's one on each floor. One could be a science lab classroom, one could be an art classroom. And then there's access to the other parts of the building. So if you're talking about middle school students, there's a chance that they're probably going to flow throughout the building to have access to other programming, elementary portion. That's what most of the physical modifications were to that particular building. But given the number of students, we do believe that they would fit in that allocation of, of the two floors that they have available.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to bring us back to Amendment 1, and we'll start off with the costs. So I do appreciate the analysis of the costs. As far as the mitigation funds, I'd like to understand the 432 in mitigation funds because on the one hand, we've been told that there are no mitigation funds for next, this year. And so could somebody explain the, the breakdown of the 432? What would that be for?
I don't know if I have a specific piece beyond what the sheet is. So there's a little bit of a narrative on this. Okay, and Ms. Berger will be down shortly. But it looks like in this one, I mean, the mitigation funds are an approximation, since we don't know exactly what the numbers are. It, it can be a little bit of a challenge anytime you're talking about this, because a few students, one way or another, can have an impact on an additional staff person or whatever that may be. So, and that would go, that would be true also of the buses. Clearly, we'd, we're looking at the additional buses. We'd obviously try and do as much efficiency as possible. So it's possible that, depending on what the other routes are looking like, you might gain some efficiencies in there. But this is, we want to make sure we're being as accurate as possible about the, the impact, bigger side of the impact fiscal cost, rather than underestimating, it's best to have the high side on the estimation.
And again, for the record, we would have to put the money forward for the, for the first year, and then the state would reimburse us the, the second year.
For the transportation piece, probably because we'd, we'd figure out what we're doing with the routes. For the other pieces, you know, the mitigation on staffing is what it is.
Right, right. And then for the, the portables, are you envisioning that we would be adding portables to Whitman, and buying new portables for, for Hamilton or Washington? Because they both currently have portables. And there will be fewer students, even if the eighth graders were grandfathered. So do you still envision that we would need to purchase even more portables for Hamilton or Washington?
I don't know if we'd have to do that. We do have a challenge with the portables at Hamilton, because our agreement with the city was for one year. I, I'm not sure how much grace we would get from the Landmarks Board, because they're the ones who actually have to approve that one. I'm not optimistic about that. So it would confine our, our spaces there. You're correct about Washington. The plan originally, once MEANIE opened, was to assess the number of portables. And then related to a small enrollment, we could probably demolish some of the older portables. And then, you know, when we talk about future levies, capital levies, and replacements, then we'd be talking about a whole new school, and then all those portables would go away. Some of the older portables can't be moved. Where we can, we try and repurpose portables. But if they're of a certain age, portables basically have what's like a VIN on them, like a vehicle identification number. And it's a code that the city has, so they're tracked. If they are so experienced that they don't have that number on them, they can't be moved. So in that case, we can only demolish. And we do have portables on some of the locations that are, that are that experienced.
Jolynn, the question I'd asked before was, there's a $432,000 mitigation estimate attached to my amendment. Could you speak to what that would be comprised of?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I think I'm, I'm going to try to cover all the, this is about grandfathering the eighth graders.
Correct.
So in the grandfathering of the eighth graders, the amount was calculated based on the assumption that potentially two additional teachers, above what the typical enrollment would generate, would be needed at both Robert Eaglestaff and at MEANIE Middle School due to low eighth grade attendance, if not all planned students attended those schools. And so when we talk about the grandfathering, we have a limit in our collective bargaining agreement about a secondary teacher assignment with no more than three different curriculum course preps and no more than two subject fields. And so what we've seen in the past, secondary students need a minimum of six courses each year. We need at least two teachers for each grade. So if those, if that school is very small, it could mean that we can't offer the regular course offerings without mitigation that we offer at all of our other schools, that it's, it's more limited. It would be a basic, it's a basic course offering that would differ from what we offer in other places. And typically, we have mitigated that. So the board could choose not to mitigate that, but it would have to recognize that that course offering could be different than all of our other schools.
Okay, well, I'm going to step back a bit and just sort of explain this, this amendment, and then lead to another question about contingency plans, because I am concerned about open enrollment and what we're, what we're going to know and not know until afterwards. So just for clarity's sake, my amendment applies to all the rising eighth graders who are slated to be moved to two new schools that we're opening up, MEANIE Middle School and Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. And this, this impacts students at, at X-TY. And this impacts students at Eckstein, Jane Addams Middle School, Whitman, Hamilton, Washington, and McClure. I don't think I've left anything out. That's a total of 369 students. The reason why the focus is on the eighth graders is because they are the ones who would be moved in their final year of middle school. And the spirit of the amendment is to allow them to complete their middle school education in the same building. It's not ideal to move any of these students. And so I'm regretful that we're having to move students at all. So what I was trying to do here was to try to lessen the amount of disruption for two reasons. One of them was to just not move as many students. And also, because we're in a year where we do not have all the funds that we'd like, there is an argument to be made that we can better serve our students in places where we already have things in place. So the, the, let's see. The sixth-grade students will be students coming up from elementary school who will be going to just a different middle school, and they'll be able to stay there for three years. The seventh graders will be able to stay there for two years and graduate from that middle school. So they will have a continuity that the eighth graders will not. And so the purpose of this was to allow some stability for the eighth graders. By way of history, this district has a history of disrupting students, moving them around. And in the past, it was for a completely different reason. It was, in the past, it was because schools were closed. And that's when I first got involved with the Seattle School District, was in the closure struggles of 2008, 2009, when hundreds and hundreds of students were removed due to closures and splits of programs. And I joined with hundreds of parents to oppose these closures. We felt that they were disruptive, we felt that the district was growing, and that these were ill-advised. The closures went through, and, but about six months later, the district had to reopen a lot of the buildings, because it turned out the district was starting to grow. And that's when it started to begin its trajectory that we see now. So the good news is, we do see that now, and we are opening buildings, and we have to fill them with students. When Jane Addams Middle School was opened a few years ago, there were a lot of eighth-grade parents in particular who lobbied to have grandfathering at that time. And at that time, the school board, which was, before I was on the school board, opted not to offer grandfathering. And I remember at the time, parents appealing to the board, and then also appealing to those of us who joined the board later, if we could somehow correct that and somehow retroactively allow some kind of grandfathering. And I told them, well, no, we can't undo a decision that was made by a previous board. And, you know, just for the record, when the board makes a decision, no matter how we vote on it, we are supposed to rally around it, or at least, you know, support it to some extent afterwards. So it resonated with me then that moving students is a very disruptive thing, and that grandfathering is one way to allow them to stay in place and finish out, and offer them some stability. So when growth boundaries discussion came up a few months ago, from the beginning, I talked to staff about what we can do in the way of grandfathering, not only for eighth graders, but for fourth graders and fifth graders. And some of the amendments that some of us brought forth in the growth boundaries discussion did include grandfathering components to the elementary moves. Because it was brought to my attention that the eighth grade, my eighth grade amendment may not have been fully vetted, may not have had all the community input that is, that would be preferred, I chose not to bring it forward during the growth boundaries discussion, but opted to allow two more months until the student assignment plan vote for people to give us input on this. And they did. And so we've heard from people in favor, we've heard from people opposed, people have brought up all kinds of good points, pros and cons. And I really appreciate all the constructive input that people have given. And this is exactly what I wanted. I wanted to hear from everybody on this. We also heard from staff on the cost associated with this. I will say that the cost, to some extent, we don't know for sure what the cost will be. And I, well, I'll come back to that in just one second. You know, in terms of the pros, I think they boil down to this. It will allow some students to complete their year, their middle school, in the same school. It will lessen the disruption for students. And to some, it may be cost-effective to serve students in where they currently are. It will also be more equitable in that it will allow all the students affected to grandfather. Right now, what will effectively, potentially happen is through the open enrollment process, there will be students who will be able to stay in place based on capacity. And that will likely not be the case for the Washington students or the Hamilton students, because their schools are already full. And so my amendment would allow everybody the opportunity to have the option to grandfather just for this one year. It's just a transition year, and then it would allow the full contingent of the sixth and seventh graders to fill the school. The cons, of course, are we, this would result in potentially a smaller cohort, and there would be less resources. And I recognize that, and that concerns me. I'm also concerned about the cost related to this. And there's also a lack of predictability, because we're not going to know who's going to avail themselves of these options. But there's a lack of predictability, no matter what, for the reasons that I just stated, and that is that we can have students choose to use the open enrollment option and stay in place. And so I am concerned about that, and I do have a question for staff. If, we did receive an email from the Whitman PTA saying they had done a survey of their families, asking them if they had the option, I mean, they do have the option, to stay in place through open enrollment, how many of them would avail themselves of that, rather than moving to Robert Eaglestaff? And somewhere between two-thirds and three-quarters of the respondents said yes, they would prefer to stay at Whitman. I will say this was not a complete survey, and they did not have complete responses. Not everybody responded to it. But if that's any indication, we could see a lot of Whitman students who don't choose to go to Robert Eaglestaff. And the upshot could be that we don't have the full complement of students in the eighth grade, even without my amendment. So I'm putting this out there, because I really want us to be ready to have some kind of mitigation, no matter what. And if we don't, you know, we need to offer some kind of assurances to the families at both MEANIE and Washington. Earlier in the night, we talked about the creative arts program that was put on the table, something potentially to cut. I thought I read that that was going to be one of the offerings at MEANIE. And so I am concerned that we need to, we need to commit to these middle schools, no matter what, and offer them the resources that we can. So finally, I just want to say that as a district, I would like us to find a way to offer stability and predictability to our families, and not disrupt our students as much as we do. And that is what I was attempting to accomplish here with this amendment.
I just wanted to add a point of clarification for open enrollment, and the point you raised about predictability. So our open enrollment process is also based on capacity and factors, such as ensuring that we are, again, utilizing the space we have across the district efficiently to support the different programs that we have. So just because every single student at a particular school may fill out a choice application for another school, we wouldn't, you know, deplete one school such that every student could have a seat at another school. You know, there is a balance, again, between being able to offer choice, but then being able to make sure, to the extent possible, we don't have schools that are overcapacity. And we do have schools that have a healthy enrollment to be able to support diverse programming and curriculum.
All right, thank you. I just have one question, and then we'll move on to, okay. I'm not sure if I officially introduced that as an amendment. Okay, I'll officially introduce it, and then I have one more question. That is Amendment One to the Student Assignment Plan for 2017-18, allowing grandfathering with transportation for all rising eighth graders. Would you read that, or do I read that? Okay, all right, as the author, all right. Approval of this item would permit and implement grandfathering with transportation at comprehensive middle schools for all rising eighth graders in the 2017-18 school year, who live within any area that is changing from one middle school to another for the 17-18 school year due to the opening of the Eaglestaff and MEANIE middle schools. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, is there any other questions or comments about this particular amendment? I did, yeah. I'll let Director Geary speak first.
My biggest concern is the future of Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. And while allowing everybody to do something equally doesn't necessarily mean it will lead to an equitable outcome for the students who end up at Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. And I don't personally feel like there are the assurances that this is going, that if all these amendments go through, that what we will have is a fully formed middle school. And while my understanding of all of these things isn't, you know, perfect, what it does seem to me is that kids from North Seattle are going to end up in Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. And those are the kids, during our Olympic Hills conversation, we were saying tended to be higher free and reduced, higher racial diversity. And so if we end up having these kids funnel into a middle school that isn't fully developed and doesn't have the resources to provide a robust education that is commensurate with the education that we're providing in all of our other middle schools, then what have we done in terms of our goal with regard to providing opportunities for all of our kids and closing the achievement gap? So that's my biggest concern with this amendment. And certainly, a mitigation price tag of nearly half a million dollars doesn't do anything to help in that analysis.
Just a point of clarity. The grandfathering would just be for one-year-only, one-time, transitionary year, and that the, basically, the following year, you'd have a full complement of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders.
And so is one year for one student more valuable or less valuable than one year for another student?
Not one student, it's 369 students from about five different schools. I think Director Blanford and then Director Burke.
I appreciate Director Geary's discussion and analysis of equal versus equitable. This seems to me that we want, part of the argument that has been made is that we want all eighth graders to have an experience in their, in the school that they came from. And that strikes me as equal. And that is very different than equitable, which is that we take students who are least well-performing and try to figure out a way to double down on their performance so that they can, so they can achieve a level of equality at some point in the future. So I think that's an important nuance that we need to be paying attention here, because it's very easy to use the word equitable when that's not actually what we're talking about. Secondly, I think about the equity of the price point on this. And I'm thinking of the $766,000 in light of the conversation that we had earlier today, how we're resolving our $74 million budget deficit. And it is difficult for me to be comfortable adding one more penny to that, because I know that our equity goals will be severely impacted if we add more money to it. And we can try to mitigate all we want to. But at the end of the day, as Principal Priss was sharing with us earlier, Cronos, I'm sorry I didn't use his last name appropriately, as he shared with us, this is impacting all classrooms. So to add even more money to our deficit seems to me to be a bit unconscionable. And so I'm planning on voting in opposition to this. And it is not because I am insensitive to the needs of our rising eighth graders, but I think in the grander scheme, as we're looking at the responsibilities that we have to serve all the students in our schools, this one does not get us where we need to be, and actually works to our disadvantage. So I'll be voting in opposition.
Director Burke?
I'd like to begin by thanking Director Peters for bringing this up. And I understand, potentially, among the directors and among the community, that there's been some divisiveness around this. And, you know, that, that kind of goes here for me, because when, when, I mean, from the conversations that I've had with my colleagues, I have the utmost faith that every, every single one of us is trying to make thoughtful, deliberate decisions. We're trying to align our decisions with sets of core values. We're trying to be respectful of families, students. And this one, this has been one of the most challenging ones for me since joining the board as well. And it's because when I think about my core values and, you know, what I try to bring to my decision-making, I talk a lot about disruption and minimizing disruption. And, you know, if we aspire to provide a stable educational environment for our kids, picking them up from one site and putting them down in another and saying, "Thank you very much, have a great time at your new school," is not really aligned with that core value. Another core value is student-centered decisions. And so when we're trying to think about what allows our students to be successful, again, disruption, relationships with their staff, their teachers, with their peers. And so then we take those core values and we contrast them. Again, some of the other things we've been talking about, the budget issues, the fact that we have existing middle schools that are impacted, that have, that are overfilled. And as a result, we're compromising the educational experiences of the kids in those buildings. Then we're starting up new buildings. And if we under-enroll those schools, we risk compromising the educational experiences of those students as well. So this is not a clear-cut picking one group over the other. This is, this is a question of how to balance all of our core values and all of our district priorities in a way that serves our students. And that's one of the reasons this has been such a struggle for me. I look back, you know, one of the slides that I found when I was looking at boundaries, the growth boundaries, there's a couple of guiding principles that the board had identified. And one of them was to minimize disruptions by aligning new boundaries with current attendance area boundaries when feasible. So that relates to boundaries, but it comes back to the concept of minimizing disruptions. Another one was to be responsive to family input, to the extent wherever possible, or to the extent feasible. This is one of those soft ones of, well, how feasible is it? We have a financial crunch, we have to populate new buildings, and we want to be respectful for our eighth graders. We want them to have a great, a great year, our rising seventh graders. So I think the struggle for me has been where to come down on this. And my feeling is that, as a system, we are better served by asking our eighth graders to go to their new schools and create amazingly successful environments there. And it hurts me to ask them to do that, because I recognize that it's a hardship for them. And I recognize that they've come here to ask us to let them stay. And here I am, turning it around, putting the pressure back on you, and I apologize for that. But that's what I feel is the least worst option in this particular case. But I want to loop back around to the process that we go through to create this student assignment plan and boundaries. And that what I've experienced as a director is, when we try to do our community engagement and try to understand how our values align with community, what are the unintended consequences of potential amendments? We find that it's really challenging. And a lot of times, people go places that are, you know, they go to places of fear, places of discontent, as compared to coming together around trying to understand what is the common, the common goal. And that's why I come back to, when we do this in the future, when we're making huge decisions that can impact large groups of students, that we figure out how to get a more comprehensive engagement that includes board and staff when we go out to the community. Because otherwise, everything looks like a left turn when you're this close to the end. end.
Director Petu?
I too have struggled with this. And it's been, especially during these times when we're really looking at our deficit. But as I always said before, that we're here because of the kids. As I continue on to wait out what's the positive and what's the minus, I know that there's, you know, there's minuses in terms of supporting them, and there's also pluses in supporting it. And I realize that many of the students have come out numerous times to tell us exactly what they're, you know, what is it that they want. And I hear them loud and clear where, you know, "We don't want our education interrupted because we decided that we're going to move them somewhere else." And as a grandma and also a mother of five kids, I real, I have 19 grandchildren, by the way. It's really hard for me to sit here and say, "Let's not do this." And so for me, you know, our students have been here on a day out, day in, wanting to ask to support them moving on to their state to stay on at their eighth grade so they could finish up their school. And I really believe that we should not allow these kids to be disruptive, especially if they've already started a trend there in terms of them wanting to stay at their school where they need to be. And it's really hard to be an eighth grader and try to interrupt what's already going on, because we're getting them ready to go on to the ninth grades. And if we want them to be stabilized and be able to learn all they can so they can be better students in high school, then we cannot interrupt their education again and move them somewhere else. So I'm really, I am going to support this amendment.
Director Gary?
My, that is a fine analysis, and I don't criticize it at all. But I do think about, are the kids that are going to come to us in the fall, who are at Robert Eaglestaff Middle School, begging us for mitigation funds? And then we, we won't have that flexibility then. So we, we're not, it's not that the voice of any student is being ignored, it's trying to anticipate all the voices that we will hear if we go forward with all the amendments that are being student-driven. It's so hard to balance out the voices that are here against the voices that we will hear from. I too am very sensitive to this issue. I had a student who went to three different schools during middle school. He ended up at Ingram in the new IBX program, and that was a challenge as well. He was a student that really went through a lot of changes. But he was in a program that, and came from a community that had a whole lot of parent support, and a lot of parents showing up at those schools to make sure that the changes that those students were facing were being dealt with. And I think that is the beauty of a lot of these people who are so interested in having their students' grandfather, is that you're here, and you will show up for your students wherever they are, and you will make that change work for them, just as all those changes for my student ultimately led to him receiving a great, great, an exceptional Seattle Public Schools education. And he is doing great now. Were there disruptions? Yes. Was that hard on him? Yes. He came from a population that was ultimately able to support those moves. I, again, continue to be concerned about the people who don't come, and I worry about the support that those kids will ultimately get at the end of all this decision-making. So please don't think that I am heartless. I have lived through it. It is hard. And I also know that students can be supported through it and thrive and do great things.
Well, this is the amendment that's given me the ulcers, as you very well know, Director Peters. I too was moved in eighth grade across the country, probably two or three years behind from our fine schools here to Montgomery County, Maryland. And I can absolutely assure you that eighth grade stunk. So the concept that we're moving kids around is very near and dear to my heart. But when I took my oath, I said I was going to do my best for all of our kids, not just some of our kids, and I'm going to vote against this. And it pains me to do so. And I want to go back to a couple of other comments that we've raised in the past. Our schools do not provide the same quality of education throughout this city. And that's one of the things that has made folks so passionate and so vociferous in this issue. So it's a much bigger issue than whether or not we're letting eighth graders finish out their middle schools at the schools that they started with. It's a much bigger issue if we set schools up to fail by not being able to offer the kinds of courses that folks need, and that we don't have, excuse me? One of our goals this next year is to do a much better job of understanding what we do offer and when, and to hopefully, to use a much overused word, align it better so that folks have better opportunity. That is exactly in line with closing the opportunity and achievement gaps. We're going to have to get a heck of a lot more creative than we are right now in terms of how we do that, in terms of blended learning, et cetera, et cetera. These, it's not just the budget issues here at all. It's not just the equity issues here at all. It's about being proactive and creative. And we can do better, and we have to do better. And everybody in this room and that's listening, I hope to heck we see you in Olympia with your boots on the ground on Monday. Because if you care enough to be here, you need to care enough to get in your car and drive to Olympia and raise a little heck. Thank you.
Yeah, this is definitely something that I think, you know, another amendment that's coming up as well, that as far as Lipton Springs and space, that some of them may think that I have a conflict of interest. We got a call anonymous saying that there could be a possible conflict of interest for me, in that my wife is the Secretary for the Urban Native Education Alliance, and they thought me asking for more space at Lipton Springs was meant I was asking for space for UNEA. And no, that is not the case. I'm asking for space for Lipton Springs and their, their school, not for a CBO. And what then also comes into play for me here is that if I support this amendment, people may think that, oh, if he supports it, that means that there'll be less people going to Eaglestaff, and then yes, more space will be available at Lipton Springs. So it gets, for me, and some people may perceive that. And although, yes, I agree with everything that's been said here as far as, yes, we don't want to be disruptive to our students and moving them from the middle school to spend their last school at a new school. But then we also shortchange those students that want to go on to a new school, and that school not going to be fully enrolled, because some of the schools opt to stay. And then, you know, we don't have the mitigation funds right now to say, yes, we'll help out with what may happen at those both schools. And so I'm stuck between this thing right now, where I'm probably looking, I'm going to have to abstain from this vote, given the coming of Amendment Four, Amendment Five in Lipton Springs.
Director Burke?
One, one quick parting comment. I wanted to try to understand what the landscape might be at Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. And so I had a conversation with Planning Principal Marnie Campbell, and also had the pleasure of attending one of the, the community meetings around organizing the new school. And she is building an air of excitement around that school, which is, it's, it's building a buzz. She's also indicated that, you know, some of the concerns around what sort of courses will be offered is going to be driven partly by the students that show up, absolutely. But she's also indicated a commitment to provide coursework, for example, in math, that aligns with the pathway students are on, providing them the next course they need. And, and so I think that the, you know, the building level commitment to provide amazing academics is, is there. And the community and the, and the staff, and hopefully from the board, to also sing praises for that new school and help them develop robust arts, music, theater programs in a short timeframe as well, is, is particularly important for me.
Okay, then this is my, my question for staff on this. The predicted numbers for MEANIE are, do you remember, do you know offhand what it is, like 500 and something? And then for Eaglestaff, it's 800 and something, is that correct?
It was right below 500 for MEANIE. And then it was the 666 for Eaglestaff, that was without the grandfathering. And then, so we talked about the impact of grandfathering would mean below 400 for MEANIE. And then we would anticipate about 233 students impacted by the Eaglestaff grandfathering amendment, so that would put them significantly below as well.
Okay. All right. I mean, knowing that even, even if there's no grandfathering, but we're not looking at huge schools to start out with, it's kind of like a startup. Did you ever consider doing a roll-up model, a sixth, seventh grade roll-up model? I know we probably may not have done this in the past, but in a year where we're dealing with a fiscal crisis and we're starting with smaller schools, is that something to consider for the future?
So with the roll-up, the issues would be similar in terms of as we think about course offerings. The availability of courses and the funding is going to be tied to student enrollment. So if we did start with just sixth and seventh, that would essentially be similar to if every student who was offered grandfathering were to be grandfathered. And so those schools would have lower enrollment, and then as a result, they just have, would have left staffing. So that was, that was not something we considered, as well as the fact as Jane, the precedent with Jane Addams was opening it with the GEO split.
And lastly, the one thing that a sixth, seventh roll-up would do is give predictability that we don't have right now. Because even without grandfathering, we don't know exactly, you know, which students will be using the open enrollment option. And so we won't really know who's going to be at Robert Eaglestaff, and more so that than MEANIE until open enrollment is over.
So again, with open enrollment, you know, a choice seat is based on space available. So if a student, any student across the district has the ability to fill out a choice application, but if they fill out an application to a school that is overcrowded and there's not a seat available, their guaranteed assignment is to their neighborhood school. So there actually is more predictability with remaining with the GEO split, because we can look to see where there's space. And then instances where we need to ensure that, again, a school starting up has a healthy enrollment to be able to offer the courses that it needs.
Right, okay. All right, if there are no more comments or questions, Ms. Ritchie, the roll?
Director Burke?
No.
Director Gary?
No.
Director Harris?
No.
Director Petu?
Yes.
Director Pinkham?
Abstain.
Director Blanford?
No.
Director Peters?
Yes.
This amendment did not pass by a two, four, one vote.
I want to thank all my colleagues for your thoughtful input on this topic. I want to thank everybody who came out tonight. I know it's been very emotional, and I know you all put a lot of work into your advocacy. And we all need to come together and make sure that all the schools our children are in throughout the city have the resources they need and the support they need. And I'm committed to that. Thank you. All right, let's move on to Amendment Two. Director Burke, do you want to read that?
I would, I would like to make a motion. Following Amendment Two, I move that the school board amend the proposed student assignment plan for 2017-18 to designate Greenwood Elementary and Broadview Thompson K8 as feeder schools for Whitman Middle School. Editing language in this student assignment plan is shown in the amendment attached to the Board Action Report.
Do I hear a second? Second? Okay. Would anyone like to make any comments or questions about this item? Director Burke?
I will, I will lead off the discussion, sharing a little bit about the basis behind this and some of the community feedback that's been received to date. The basis behind this was when we were looking at enrollment figures as a result of the GEO split, the vast majority of the students that feed Robert Eaglestaff are drawn from Whitman Middle School. And so the concern was whether this has an adverse impact on Whitman, exactly as we were discussing around Robert Eaglestaff. And so really, our, our goal is, as we're doing this, we're trying to balance the enrollment numbers such that the services, the capacity, the funding, the educators is representative. And from the projections, Whitman was looking to have 485 students in 2017, whereas Robert Eaglestaff would open with, a total of, the building would open with a total of 810 students, including the Lipton Springs K8 school. And when I looked at the number of feeder schools, feeder elementaries that were assigned to Green, or to, assigned to Robert Eaglestaff, and I compared that with some of the other comparables in the district, it really gave me pause that we were setting up for something that three to five years from now, we would still have that imbalance between Whitman and Robert Eaglestaff. One of the comparables, we can think about Hamilton Middle School, which is heavily over-enrolled, and it only has three elementary, attendance area elementary schools. It also has highly capable, and it also has language, it's also a language immersion pathway school. So it has these two other things as part of its makeup. We compare that to Robert Eaglestaff, which has, in this case, originally about four, five if you count Broadview Thompson K8, feeder schools, plus highly capable, plus Lipton Springs. And so that looked like something that we were setting up for another Hamilton Middle School in three to five years. So that was the basis behind this amendment. The other aspect about it was recognizing that both Whitman and Robert Eaglestaff would not be over-enrolled year one. So regardless of whether this amendment passes or doesn't pass, families have an opportunity to select either of those schools through choice enrollment. So again, the amendment would be focused on long-term capacity balancing, and we would be relying on families in the choice process to make short-term decisions that they felt benefited their family the greatest. So this is the basis behind it, and recognizing that in a future amendment, we, we have a potential commitment to increase the capacity space that we're, we're setting aside for Lipton Springs K8. This is a, this was a possibility to, to try to avert problems in the future. And unfortunately, because of the timing of the holidays, this And unfortunately, because of the timing of the holidays, this motion, this, this was introduced shortly before the winter break. And so we weren't able to coordinate community input until after the, the, the winter break. And by the board delaying vote by one week, we were able to plan and host a meeting, which actually took place last night at Greenwood Elementary. And I apologize, I didn't have an exact headcount. I'll just take a, take a wild guess at 40 to 50 people, predominantly Greenwood, but several Broadview Thompson families as well. We had the pleasure of Broadview Thompson Principal RJ Salmons and Whitman Principal Sue Kleitch attended as well. So they were able to share some of their feedback and insight. And if I were, if I, to try to paraphrase the feedback from the community, there's overwhelming concern about last-minute changes. This is something which some families have, have watched and been planning for, that their students would be assigned to Robert Eagle Staff for multiple years and are already part of the planning, already excited about it. And so the risk that they might be assigned to Whitman is really concerning. In the context of choice, that alleviates that in the short term, but if they have younger children or younger siblings, that concern remains. And, and so that's a completely valid perspective, which I don't think was fully represented in this amendment. I think I'll just let other directors comment and question from that point.
Director Geary.
So if this amendment passes, my question is, well, just looking at Whitman, are we, is Whitman going to need mitigation if we pass the student assignment plan as it was drafted in order to avoid the same problems that potentially would happen at Robert Eagle Staff if we move everybody away from that school? What mitigation are we anticipating Whitman will need in order to provide robust across-grade curriculum, if any, with 485, 485 students, if that's, if I'm reading this correctly?
So far, we're not anticipating much mitigation there. But, I mean, you have an open enrollment process that could have some impacts. Again, both those schools have some capacity that are built in there. Obviously, we'd also want to make sure that we're having conversations with the principals to see what the actual schedules look like, so. But it is driven by the number of students, number of staff that you have in there. So that's, as Billen was telling me, we're not anticipating much of that right now.
Director Burke.
I'll, I'll try to address that and try to channel my inner Principal Kleitch, because that question came up at the community meeting yesterday. And based on her, her feedback and also community surveys of existing Whitman families, there is a fairly decent-sized contingent that is anticipating staying at Whitman via choice, regardless of what happens, because they have that space. So although she didn't come right out and say, "We won't need mitigation funding", the, there was, the concern of, of the programs being decimated was reduced based on a significant number of families staying in place.
Just a quick comment on that survey. I also am a Whitman parent. I have two boys in that particular school. I did not take the survey, so I just kind of left that one alone and let everything else go.
And then just one other point that I just wanted to raise for folks' information. Again, with Whitman, despite the fact that we do anticipate decline in enrollment with the opening of Eagle Staff and similarly with Washington and the opening of MENI, part of it is about right-sizing those buildings. Both Washington and Whitman have a significant number of portables. Washington has 14 portables. They are using all 14 portables as classrooms. Whitman has eight portables that they're actually using for classrooms and they have additional portables that they have on site, very few of which are in great condition, to be kind. So Whitman, we do see the enrollment increasing over time. So that combination of being able to allow families choice in the short term, when we do see that decline in enrollment, also gives us the ability to ensure that there is space when we see growth in that balloted area in the long term.
Director Blanford.
So I, I appreciate that response and I'm wondering if that is the response to this question, which is, as you were creating the student assignment plan, you, you didn't write this amendment to, into it. And I'm wondering why you didn't choose the opportunity to write this into it? What you're thinking?
I, I think my last point's just about thinking long-term and being able to, again, balance that with families having the opportunity through choice to be able to access some of the additional seats so that the impact on Whitman wouldn't be as great. But again, we are still thinking about all of our students today, tomorrow, and in the long term.
And are there any other concerns besides that, the, the issue around right sizing that you'd bring up? To find if there aren't.
I mean, the, the only other concern ties back to the grandfathering, the conversation around the grandfathering amendment that we talked about previously. So the impact of making that change would be that Eagle Staff would have less students as they start up. And so that would require funds that we just don't have to be able to support the students who are there at that time. And then, you know, I appreciate Director Burke bringing up some of the additional feedback that he got, specifically around changes last minute that some families aren't, aren't anticipating. So with a change like that, that talks about feeders, we have to think about students who are in elementary school, who have been anticipating these changes, as well as the students who are currently in middle school, who are anticipating moving to Eagle Staff as a result of these changes.
Director Burke.
I just want to, I was thinking back about how I had my statement to date and I, I wanted to be very explicit that for the families who were able to and, and, and had the opportunity to attend the, the community meeting, there was pretty clear, fairly clear, families that are, that have students that are already attending Whitman, obviously have a higher concern in maintaining, supporting this amendment. Families that, that don't, or that have younger students, sometimes, you know, predominantly, at some level, appeared to have a higher desire to not pass this amendment and remain at Eagle Staff. And then I just wanted to clarify, Ashley, if you could, just for the record, describe the number of, of potential students should this amendment pass and should all students move from Eagle Staff to Whitman, what would be the impact on Eagle Staff?
So if all students in those particular areas were to move from...
Worst-case scenario?
Yeah. So we looked currently at the number of students who live within those areas, who are attending their attendance area middle school, which would be Whitman at that point in time, at this point in time. And there were about roughly 70 students in each of those across the three grades. So that would be roughly about 140 students. So if we would anticipate a similar pattern, we would anticipate something similar. So historically, I think we would look at a range of maybe somewhere between 120 and potentially up to 200 students who would be impacted. And that would shift the enrollment for those middle schools, such.
Okay, I'll weigh in on this. First of all, I want to thank Director Burke for the thought that went into this. I know he's thinking about different pieces of the puzzle and he's being conscientious about reaching out to the community and the principal on this. And from, from what I gather, he's been getting some mixed results, some mixed feedback. And I've told Rick all along that, you know, I'm interested in knowing more about this. And, you know, I'm, I'm torn, because it sounds like there are, you know, two, two ways of looking at this. And, you know, we've just had a long discussion about what happens if we don't have enough students going to a new school. Again, I, I think we're not going to know a lot until after open enrollment. You know, I think Whitman's numbers probably are going to be bigger than projected and I don't know what's going to happen, you know, in other schools. But you know what? We're going to start off with some schools that are just going to grow. And so I'm optimistic about the growth of, of all of our schools that have room. So, but I still feel that I don't have enough knowledge on this item to make an informed decision about this. And so, you know, I'm struggling with, with this proposal, though I appreciate the work you've put in, especially over the break.
One more clarification question. Should this amendment not be something that is, that passes, could you weigh in on the staff's opinion pro-con of reevaluating this next year once we actually have some, some tushes in seats?
Yeah, I think there are, there are a couple of pieces that we'll be looking at from the, so one has a very capital-focused analysis. And that is Whitman is one of the middle schools that we're looking at in Bex 5. So that will focus us on kind of what we're looking at, at the patterns and then possibly even timelines, the, the list of a couple of the projects. Whitman is one of the ones that we're looking at for consideration. So in that, we'd be looking at what is the right-size capacity of the particular building? We've been with our newer schools, right around 1,000 for the capacity. And clearly, if you've been to Whitman, like several of our other schools, it's in need to be redone, much like Mercer and Washington and Aki. We've got several. Eckstein's another one. We've got, like, half of our middle schools probably need to be addressed. So that will, through that process, we'll definitely be taking a look at, at that and next year's another place. So when, one of the other processes that we're looking at right now, we were just talking about this today during the Capacity Management Task Force meeting, was with the buildings we just opened up this year, five new buildings. Is there, what is kind of the magnet effect of a new building? Is it pulling students that previously haven't even been SPS students back into the, into the fold? Is it through open enrollment attracting more students than they might otherwise have done? So we're comparing this year's enrollment versus last year at the, at some of the new schools. We'll do the same the following year when, when we open these four new schools this fall. So we'll have two middle schools, so we can actually take a look at that impact on middle schools and not just the elementaries.
Director Harris.
Another ulcer. Thank you, Director Burke, for stretching on this one. Thank you for taking the time to meet with the folks at the affected schools. we still do not have a system where we have the staff support and the time to do real community engagement. I'm not suggesting that your community engagement wasn't very real. However, with some time and staff support and using the community engagement tool, one would hope that we would have heard from even greater section of our communities and those affected. Given that and given my propensity for talking and I hope walking community engagement, I'm going to vote no.
Director Pinkham.
Mine is just going to be real quick, even though, yes, I am listed as a co-sponsor on this, but again, for reasons stated earlier, for the amendment that I'll be bringing up next, I'll be abstaining from this one as well.
Director Geary.
I'm take, I take great comfort in the information and the long-term view that in the short term, our parents will have the flexibility to meet their needs. And in the long run, those people who had a longer vision in terms of planning for the future of their kids, that we can serve both by not approving the amendment. But I think that your intent was, I, I appreciate the work and I want to thank that, both of you, for your amendments, because amendments are hard. It's, I want people to know, it is, there is something hard about going against the district recommendations. It doesn't feel good to go against them. And so that's, it's a hard thing to do. It's not done lightly. So I appreciate being willing to do it, because it's, because we don't necessarily have the resources on school board to do all the work we want to, to make them airtight, to run down every rabbit hole, to answer every question. It is a, it's a leap of faith. That's unfortunate, as Director Harris kind of points out in her comment. But I just wanted to throw that out, that it is, the work is appreciated, the conversation is appreciated. And in this case, I think we have a better chance of the plan meeting everybody's needs. And then again, we'll have a new tool. And when we look at everything, maybe we will decide that it's...
Two new tools.
Two new tools, that we will reexamine and better address the capacity issues.
I just wanted to make one other comment, in particular to the last few comments about engagement. And then, you know, just looking at the impacts of opening new schools. And I appreciate thinking about how we can bring those two together. And so when we look in the future at our conversations with the community, looking together at the impact of opening up two new middle schools and having an open conversation about the real data when we see it, as we are holding ourselves accountable and in, including the community in that process. So as Flip already mentioned, you know, we are committed to, it only helps us do our work better to be able to look at how things play out every year. But we are committed to assessing the impacts of our boundaries as we've made them. And then, you know, again, we want to minimize the impact in the future, but we also want to make sure that our plans continue to be sustainable long-term.
Are there any other questions or comments about this amendment? Ms. Ritchie, the roll call, please.
Director Geary.
No.
Director Harris.
No.
Director Ptoo.
No.
Director Pinkham.
Abstain.
Director Blanford.
No.
Director Burke. Director Peters.
Sorry, no. This vote did not pass by a one, five, one.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to the next item. And that is, what is now Amendment Five to the Student Assignment Transition Plan for 2017-18, Facility Space for Lipton Springs K8. Who would like to read in the whole item?
Can I do it here? Because I do have, and can someone help me begin with this? Because I do have an amendment to the which was originally posted. How do I read this?
Process question, how do we do?
An amendment to an amendment.
With an amendment to the amendment.
Okay, we've got General Counsel Noel Treat here.
All right, Noel Treat, General Counsel. So you haven't read your amendment yet. So I think at this point, you've noted for the record that you have a change from what was posted. So what I would recommend is just go ahead and read the amendment that you, as you want it to be proposed now. You don't have to make an amendment to an amendment, because you don't have a true amendment actually before the body until you make the proposed motion itself.
But just to confirm, though, there's, there's an amendment that's on the record, it's a written amendment, and then there's... a written amendment, and then there's the consideration to modify that amendment.
The amendment actually isn't technically before the board until the motion is made here at this meeting. So we do, we do publish ahead of time the amendments that people may be proposing at the meeting. But until you make the motion verbally here, it's not an act of amendment that you have to amend-
Okay.
-if you're tweaking the language.
Okay.
I think it's adequate, just to note, you're making an adjustment from what was published and posted, and then you, then you would just go ahead and make your motion now.
But then I, then if my added amendment doesn't go through, I'd still like the original one that was posted to be considered, so that's-
Right. So then you would, so what you would do in that, the sequence there would be, you would propose the motion now in the way you want it worded, and then that would get voted on. And if it were to be voted down, you could then make a new motion, which was the original language, and go through the process that way.
Well, I think we're talking about two different things.
Okay.
We're talking about an existing amendment and then a whole new one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so don't we-
I misunderstood, based on, based on something someone told me earlier might come up tonight. I misunderstood. Okay.
So that being the case, do we, don't we start with the one that's already here, and then we go to the second one, unless, I think it's separate from this one. Is that correct?
Well, the amendment that was submitted by Rick and I originally, I then added some additional language I shared with Rick and Nate, and then-
I guess that's, that's the root issue, is if there's an amendment that has language, and then there's possible consideration to change that language, then both of them are worthy of some discussion, what is the sequence?
Well, the, the sequence really is whoever gets, gets the floor and makes the motion first would make the motion that they want to have considered and passed. And then in the discussion of that motion, as worded by the person making the motion, you could raise, I think there's a better way to do this, here's the alternative. And then you'd vote, you'd vote the way it's proposed, up or down. And if it gets voted down, then you could go on to the next one, and someone could move that one.
That sequence seems reasonable, so I would make the original motion.
And then I'll point out an additional-
Okay, let's hear the original motion.
So the, this one's a little bit wordier. I move that, one, the school board signals clear intent that the Robert Eaglestaff Building will be the long-term home of Lipton Springs K-8. Two, allocation of classroom spaces should maintain integrity of the Lipton Springs academic programming with consideration for actual enrollment and funded staffing levels. Three, facility space should be provided for up to 250 students, sorry, facility space shall be provided for up to 250 students for Lipton Springs K-8 with reconsideration as part of the 2019-20 student assignment plan. And four, the school board encourages and supports collaboration between Robert Eaglestaff Middle School and Lipton Springs K-8 to increase options and capacity for students in the middle grades, middle school grades.
And can I second that right now? Just so I get some, one second.
So don't we now proceed to discuss what is now on the floor?
Yes, now the motion as, as just voiced by Director Burke, now the bodies, how you discussed that.
Okay.
So I think that's, there's, there's already been some, some discussion around this, and there's some, some background information in the motion. But recognizing, you know, visiting Lipton Springs and seeing the value of what they serve, the, the community they serve, the, hearing the testimony from some of their families, you know, the, and recognizing that Lipton Springs has been moved around in a way that's made it really hard for them to reach their target enrollment. And when it's hard for them to reach their target enrollment, it's hard for them to reach their target staffing without mitigation. So Lipton Springs has been stuck in kind of a chicken-and-egg problem, where they can't get their numbers up enough to not need mitigation, but there have been enough barriers to getting their numbers up. And so my perspective, which I heard from, from community and Director Pinkham as well, was that we need to give this school a chance. We need to give this school the space, the support, the continuity and predictability, that they're not going to be moved in another year or two or five, that they have a long-term home, and that it aligns with a place that's culturally important to them, and that aligns with past promises as well. And so what, what I had heard from families and, and building leadership was that barriers to their growth included the idea that there was a cap of 150 students. And also, that their site was uncertain. And so I think about that in terms of organization, and as a board director, how can we provide governance that removes those barriers? And so, number one, the clear intent that the Eaglestaff Building is their long-term home. We want to be able to shout that from a mountaintop. We want them to be able to shout that from a mountaintop, that long-term home means long-term home. As far as space, the idea that the 150-student cap was limiting, we want to remove that barrier. So we want to commit to space for, let's, let's say 250. That's a great starting place, so that there, there's not a limiting factor there. One of the other concerns has been classroom allocation. And so whether it's 14, whether it's more than 14, whether it's something else entirely, and I think this is, this will be a, a future conversation, my feeling in crafting this amendment, and has been that the, the best people to determine the number of school, the number of classrooms, is the school community. And if we, as a board, provide them the space, the opportunity to do that, then they will tailor their programming in a way that meets their needs. So that's really the, the intent and the backstory behind the amendment, the way it's, the way it's proposed initially.
Director Blandford?
My question is for the author of the amendment, and it is, in light of the fact that we've had lots of conversation recently about promises, and promises made and then not followed through on. I look at the, the term, or I look at the statement, "The school board signals clear intent that Robert Eaglestaff Building will be the long-term home of Lipton Springs K-8." And it, I just, I, I have some difficulty with the notion that we're signaling the intent, like, that means that it's, we're making a promise that it will be the long-term home. And I can imagine, though I don't hope that this is the case, I can imagine lots of different scenarios where, at some point, we have to revisit that. And so I, I fear strong language like this painting us into a corner that we may not want to be in. Have you thought of that consideration? And if so, would you share your thoughts?
Yeah, that, that has been one of the front and center considerations. And I think that when we look at what are the different things that could disrupt the, that commitment, I can think of one that certainly would, and that would be a natural disaster. But some of the other ones, we have assignment area schools that feed that building. Students in neighborhood schools are guaranteed enrollment in their neighborhood middle school. That's another commitment. We have another commitment to the, to the highly capable cohort, which is that they're guaranteed admission in the highly capable cohort. So by making this statement, I'm publicly saying, you know what? If neighborhood schools or highly capable cohort create enough pressure that it's potentially going to force Lipton Springs to move, we have to step back by a couple of years and be really thoughtful and proactive about how we keep them in that space. That was the thought process behind it.
And for me, part of the thought process is the actual site itself. Lipton Springs has cultural significance to the Native community, and Lipton Springs K-8 is right now the only Native-themed school we have. And then if we put them in Eaglestaff, then, oh, all of a sudden, we need room for HCC or something else. Then we move this school from a culturally significant for Native students, from a school that was named after a Native American principal here, just does not ring true as far as, you know, providing somewhat from this community, students that would attend that, a school that would make them feel welcome, you know? Okay, let's put them off over in this other school because, you know, so for me, that's getting a little bit equity, well, access for someone to have a school where they feel like, yes, this is a school that's going to represent who I am and the theme of this school. So the intent is, let's keep them there as much as we can, and not have the plan that if they, oh, now they have 280 students, we need to move them to another location.
Director Geary and Director Petu?
I don't have a problem with the loss of flexibility in this particular regard, because I think the assurances is part of, though I'm not trained in it, but I could imagine that the assurance is part of an equity analysis in that what we need to do to lift up a community that is not advantaged, usually within our society, is to be very purposeful in creating a promise that we are making, that future boards can't easily undo. Because that is a history, a piece of history that has happened too often within this community, from what I understand. And so I personally am okay, because I think this is a necessary part of what we need to do in this instance, even though we can't do it with everybody. It's different, but it seems right to me. That said, anticipating the amendment that may be coming and wanting to talk about it while we're talking about everything, I do, I, to me, when I think about what we're setting up, there's two issues. There is space, and there is staff. So I wonder, at this point, how much mitigation are we providing for this program? And is that built into our future budget?
Amount of mitigation for Lipton Springs.
I know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm trying to send something out still.
Of litigation?
Mitigation for Lipton Springs.
Advocacy?
Yeah.
Right now?
Yeah.
Today? None for next year?
Currently.
How much are we currently doing? How, and have we built any, in any for next year? And how does that change this landscape?
We currently have some mitigation, because Lipton Springs is small. I can't remember if it is two or three additional staff. Right now, since everyone in the WSS, that was just consensus AOKed, everyone goes back to base. They would lose that part of their funding. And then there is no additional mitigation built in for them yet. We would still run through the $2 million equity tier analysis, and they could or could not come out with additional funding app from that.
Director Petu, and then Director Harris?
As I was one of the regional board directors, actually, who have really made a, an effort to save this particular school and program, I think it's very important that we are able to really find, and I, a space that we had promised that we would be able to actually move them into this particular school once it was built. And, and I like the fact that Rick actually has put in here, that, you know, that it's our judiciary duty is to actually to assign space to the school, and hopefully that it will be their longtime home. I believe that this particular program and the Native American program have been moved around too many times, and it's time that we finalize and actually give them a space that we can say it's their final home. And I also believe that, once we finalize the space for them, where they can actually be able to run their program, their enrollment will go up. And so I believe that instead of us limiting their enrollment, I really would like to see us assign 14 rooms to this program, so it can help to grow. I know right now the enrollment is not as high as we want to, but I believe that as we stabilize this particular school and be able to support them in ways that we can, and I know we don't have any money, but at the same time, you can do a lot of things about money at times, when you're really desperate. But anyway, at this point, I support the fact that, that I would like to see Eaglestaff as the permanent home for Lipton Springs.
I appreciate you bringing this up, Director Blandford, because that's something that I've looked at. And, and I have to say that if ever we were going to double down, this community deserves us to double down and make a really clear statement. Because for over 25 years, this community's been moved around, it's like the phoenix has been raising from certain death, this program, and then combining and being flexible, and frankly, not being treated very well. That said, I would be unwilling to vote for a 14-room specification, because I think that that potentially puts us in a situation, while this school is built up, to not using space well. I think the strength of the statement that, that was made in the amendment that we talked about, that I, I completely embrace, gets us to that place where this community will have a lot of leverage behind it, should we not follow through on this very strong language. But at the same time, I don't want to handcuff us in terms of using that space while we bring the numbers up and the participation in this terribly important school.
So with that, can I do a hopeful posse addition?
Yeah, so that one, there's, there's a couple different approaches to this. One addition, and I did just check with Anya, so now I understand what you want to try and do. You, as I understand it, you want to propose to add one additional bullet to the, to the motion.
To the motion, correct.
So one approach to doing that is you could propose to, you could move to amend the motion, or to move the proposed amendment, and then, you know, you'd move and describe what you want to add, and then you'd need to get a second to your amendment to the amendment. And then the order of voting would be, you vote on the amendment to the amendment, and that either passes or doesn't, and then you'd come back and vote on the amendment as either amended or not. So if you want to propose to add your language, you could now make a motion to amend the amendment by adding the following, and then you could read into the record the language that you sent to Anya earlier.
I want to move to amend the amendment with the following language.
Yeah.
Proceeding, actually, after the facility space shall be provided for up to 250 students for Lipton Springs K-8 with reconsideration as part of the 2019-20 student assignment plan, at this bullet point, a minimum of 14 full-size classrooms plus two research rooms will be allocated for the exclusive and full-time use of Lipton Springs in the school year 2017-18. This will enable it to meet current needs and ensure compliance with IDA and A requirements in relation to the three existing special ed programs.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. I'd like to weigh in with my comments, which actually apply to both amendments, and that has to do with the history of this particular school. And in the time that I've been in the district, it's been known by multiple names, AS1, Pinehurst, Lipton Springs. And each time, as long as I've been here, the school has been under some sort of threat of closure or being moved. And so this is the first time where it's being given a home, and I appreciate the fact that, a permanent home, and I appreciate the fact that Director Burke is emphasizing that. And I believe there's a great deal of will on this board to make a commitment to this school, and that's one of the strengths of that amendment. I also recognize that staff did take a look at the enrollment trends of this school and saw that it was only reaching a certain number, and that was what helped inform them with what they predicted or allocated for Robert Eaglestaff. But what I would add to that, though, is whenever you move into a new building, you have to anticipate that there's going to be some enthusiasm, especially when, by new building, I mean one, a new construction. And I think it's quite likely that we could see some growth in this school, and I think we should allow for that. And that is another strength of Director Burke's and Director Pinkham's, you know, you- your combined amendment is you're allowing for the, that growth. And so I'm excited about doing this and making a statement as a board that we do want to give this school a chance to really put down some roots in land that is significant to many of the students in this school and to the spirit of the school. As far as allocating a very specific number of classrooms, I would like to ensure that they have the space they need, the space they currently have, and have space to grow. I am hesitant, though, to put an actual number to it because I honestly don't know enough about the space there, the space they will, they will need. And so, you know, I'm hesitant to be very specific about such numbers. I also think the student assignment plan typically doesn't get into that level of detail. The student assignment plan, the main purpose is to figure out pathways and locations without getting into the actual minutia. And so this would be a little bit of an aberration for the student assignment plan. And I don't know if that's the precedent we want to set. But I still do appreciate the spirit of, of both of your efforts on this. Thank you.
Yeah, part of the spirit for me behind this is to kind of reflect what Lipton Springs currently has at Lincoln. And then if we're looking at growing the program and if they currently have 14 classrooms plus their resource rooms for their staff, students that they serve, then to move them to Eagle Staff with not saying, yes, you'll at least have what you have at Link, Lincoln. At Eagle Staff, how are they going to grow? So it's like, you know, taking a, a plant from a small pot and put them in an even smaller pot and expecting the, the plant to grow, kind of in a sense. So that's why I would like to add the language as far as, let's at least assure them that they're going to have the same space that they had before, as we leave Lincoln into Robert Eagle Staff.
Clarifying question. Well, doesn't, doesn't the original language say, give them the space they have?
The, in the background information section, there's a, a paragraph that calls out the current use of Lipton Springs, currently using 14 classrooms and two smaller resource rooms in its interim location. So that is indicated in the background section. And then as part of the motion, number two, allocation of classroom spaces should maintain integrity of the Lipton Springs academic programming. So that's the methodology behind the original vote, the original amendment, is calling out what it is and stating an explicit expectation that we will maintain the integrity of that. And I just want to explicitly call out that what I've, the feedback that I've heard from the community is that the school has recently gone to individual grade levels. And while that creates some, some real challenges with, with staffing ratios, and especially in light of mitigation dollars or lack thereof, it's something that they're really committed to as a school. And so the feedback was, please don't do something with our space that forces us to do, to go back to a, you know, to mixed grades because it's even harder to differentiate at that point. And so that, the attempt was to build that into the original motion. And I, you know, I want to also say that either the original motion or as amended, I believe that both of those are a huge win for the school, for the district, for the board. And, you know, I still slightly favor the original language.
Yeah, and I guess for me, that I just want to make sure that, you know, yes, it was mentioned in the background information that, again, how, you know, allocation of classrooms should, should maintain integrity, I'm not sure, you know, when we use, again, a little bit looser language as to how that can mean. Because I heard some possibilities of, you know, putting walls in classrooms that currently exist in Eagle Staff versus, you know, trying to find them another full-size classroom where they're talking about, oh, let's put up bare, you know, let's put the classrooms that are currently assigned to make multiple rooms. So I wanted to hopefully provide some better language and say, no, let's give them the same space that they have now, which is at least that, that minimum 14. And that doesn't mean, you know, for 2018, maybe we'll look at it again and things can change. So I'm asking that we commit to them for the 17, 18 year, what they have now.
Okay, Director Blandford and then Director Geary.
My questions go to the authors of the amendment and the amendment to the amendment. And I recognize that when we make resource allocation, staffing decisions, we make them based on, on where the kids go, where they, where they enroll, right? And so I'm wondering if we are making a, a space allocation in this case, which I think this, this amendment goes to. It says, we're making a space allocation and we're making a long-term commitment to maintain that space allocation. I, I find myself wondering, if the kids don't show up for some reason, what happens in that situation? Do we have rooms that go unoccupied because we have made an earlier commitment that those rooms are designated only towards, towards Lipton Springs?
Just before, that was my question. And I also wonder if this conversation will be interpreted to mean staff? That people will say, we are doing something more than just setting aside space when we're not having that conversation right now. So I just want to make it very, that's my, my concern, that we're going to set aside space, which others will imply will mean something that we're not assuring them of, and then it will look like a broken promise. That, that is a concern for me because it doesn't make sense to set aside space for individual classrooms when ultimately we won't be able to staff them each with a teacher because the numbers don't support that without mitigation.
Well, I think what's really unique about this is that it's in another school. Lipton Springs K-8 is in Robert Eagle Staff Middle School, whereas it's not its own separate building where, yes, if it did have its own separate building that had 14 rooms by itself and its two resource rooms, would we be concerned too much about, is it going to fill all 14 rooms? We're more concerned about, I think, because, oh yeah, it's also part of Robert Eagle Staff Middle School, to me, that, because there's other rooms that are supposed to go to the, Robert Eagle Staff, the middle school is, so, to me, that if this was its own separate K-8 school that had 14 classrooms, that had two resource rooms, would we be concerned about, are we going to fill up the 14 rooms as we are now with it being at Robert Eagle Staff Middle School?
I think, I'd like to build on that as well because I think the, the question is a valid one. Are we allocating space that could potentially be vacant? And I think the underlying assumption behind this, this, either of these amendments, which is supported by the data, is that we know, no, we have high confidence that in the initial one to two years of Robert Eagle Staff, it will not be at capacity. And so therefore, there will be vacant rooms and, or underutilized rooms. And as such, it creates more flexibility about how those spaces are used, whether they're used for small group discussions, whether they're used for smaller classrooms, whether they're used for storage, whether they're vacant. And my belief in, in trying to put this together was that the best people to, to reconcile that are the principals, the two principals that share that space. But the best thing that we can do as a board is provide very clear guidance that if there's something that is encroaching on the integrity of the Lipton Springs program, the board is not satisfied with that.
Any more questions or comments about the amendment to the amendment? Okay, at this point, I believe we take a roll.
You call, vote on the amendment to the amendment.
Okay. Ms. Ritchie, the roll? This is on the amendment to the amendment, which specifies 14 rooms.
Got it. Director Harris?
No.
Director Patu?
Yes.
Director Pinkham?
Yes.
Director Blandford?
No.
Director Burke?
No.
Director Geary?
Yes.
Director Peters?
No.
This vote did not pass at a four to three zero.
Okay, so now we return.
Sorry, yes, sorry. Three yes, four no.
All right. So we move on now to the original amendment. Is there any more discussion of this? I think we've probably covered everything. So without any further ado, let's move to the roll on this amendment, the original amendment. Ms. Ritchie.
Sorry.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Yes.
Director Blandford?
No.
Director Burke?
Yes.
Director Geary?
Yes.
Director Harris?
Yes.
Director Peters?
Yes.
This motion did pass at a six to one, zero vote.
Okay, I think we have one more vote we need to do, which is on the whole student assignment plan.
As, as amended.
As amended.
Yes, that's correct.
Prior to vote, I'd like to make a motion. If that's the way we have to do this, to discuss, um, there is a, has been a consideration, conversation between directors, community and staff. Is this best done in a motion or is this best done as a discussion? I defer to, for Olympic View pathways to Robert Eagle Staff.
All right, so you have a question that you want clarification on regarding?
Question for clarification.
Okay, so we're back to talking about the whole, the whole plan. Is this the appropriate time for discussion? Can it just happen?
Yeah, no, discussion and question before you vote on the.
Okay, that is appropriate. So are you directing your question to staff on this issue?
This question is directed to staff and I, I apologize for deferring it, but it was important to not have this discussion prior to the, it, it influences, all the other amendments influenced this.
Okay.
So there are two parts of the Olympic View area, which areas 91 and 92, which the community there has indicated a, sort of a long-term concern that they've, they've been trying to understand why, area, I believe, area 91, there's concern that it's been incorrectly drawn, that it should have been incorporated in the Jane Adams region, but it was only through a, a couple of clerical errors or not updating matters as a result of board action, that that area was not assigned to Jane Adams. And then area 92 is currently going to Eckstein, but it's also a small subset of the Olympic View neighborhood school. So my, my request is for staff to provide feedback, recommendation, and that that recommendation could be couched in terms of, what would you recommend for this year for those families? And is there a recommendation for next year if there isn't one for this year?
Is this the group or a subset of even of these groups that there will be some kids that will go from elementary school, a tiny subset of them will go to a different middle school, they'll go to Robert Eagle Staff, and then rather than following the Robert Eagle Staff cohort, they will flip back to where their original elementary school cohort went in terms of high school. So these kids, we have planned them a pathway, this little subset, that they will be bouncing around just by the way we've planned it.
That is my, my understanding from this community and that based on their surveys in 2013, their PTA was unanimously in support of realigning to Jams and Eckstein, or just Jams, or something that maintained the integrity of their cohorts. And that since that time, they haven't been able to get this perceived issue resolved. And so that's the request. There's still a very large proportion based on the survey data that was just done yesterday that is willing to do a sharp left turn to make an amendment to adjust that. And that recognizing that it would reduce enrollment potentially in Eagle Staff, but neither of the previous two amendments passed. So therefore, the threat or the concern to Robert Eagle Staff is minimized. And so I'm wondering, for those families where we're creating this localized disruption, is there an action that we can take by amendment tonight?
So the, the two areas that were just mentioned, area 91 and 92, those are the reference areas going back to the change areas that we were using during the growth boundaries conversations. And so those are two areas that were, were, are, this year in Eckstein and Jane Adams and per the growth boundaries plan, moving to Eagle Staff. So those areas feed into Eagle Staff. And so again, based on our anticipated enrollments for both Jane Adams and Eckstein and the original plan, to have those areas move into Eagle Staff, we are recommending a change to those areas.
Being moved away from their cohort from middle school and then being again moved away from any connections they made in middle school to a separate high school, then the Robert Eagle Staff.
So for our high schools, our, our high, our middle schools don't feed into high schools the same way as our elementaries. And we are, at the high schools, going to be looking at new boundaries for all of that area with the opening of Lincoln, so.
I'll just kind of do the follow-up question. Until 2019, when Lincoln opens, is that the possibility that some students might go from one place to another?
I, I just, I think that is a really, for all the reasons, it's one thing when you have a relatively large cohort traveling together, even if they're not their closest, dearest friends. And it's another, if you have just two or three kids ping ponging back and forth that way. And so I really think that we need to put something in there to allow those students some relief. Either they travel on with their middle school cohort, or they don't have to leave the pathway of their elementary cohort. If it's, if it's a small enough and non-disruptive enough group, and especially that leap from middle school to high school, to not have any chance to create, to carry with you some of the people you've met, seems tough.
So recognizing that bad policy or poorly thought-out policy, even with the best intentions, can be really damaging, I want to be thoughtful about this, but I would still like to make a motion. So, um, but before I do, I'm going to try, I'm going to try a test balloon for, what would, would there be adverse effects from Flip and Ashley's enrollment point of view of guaranteeing students in 91 and 92 choice admission, should they elect John Adams, or sorry, Jane Adams or Eckstein? Basically, use the, the opportunity of choice.
Oh, yeah, I was partially hearing that. We're also trying to figure out the, the flow and where the students are and the number of students involved.
Right. And so is, do you see an adverse impact from a policy point of view of guaranteeing those families in areas 91 and 92, the opportunity to go to Jane Adams or Eckstein where they're currently attending? Basically, just, even if those schools reach capacity, giving them the opportunity to opt in? And not making boundary changes and not making student assignment plan changes beyond empowering those families or enabling those families to, to stay where they are?
From a policy standpoint, no. From an operational standpoint, probably. Because we have to enact that policy into how that would play out. That's the challenge with that. I think we're talking about 60, about 65 students that we're looking in that particular area. Area 91 has 50, area 92 has 14.
And so area 91, which is currently predominantly at Eckstein, I believe.
Eckstein has more space than Jane Addams. Jane Addams is currently, we're looking at them being over their capacity, Eckstein is slightly under.
So there's an inherent beauty to that. 92 exists, continues to go to Jane Addams, smaller number of students continues to attend the least impacted school. In area 91, the larger number of students attends the school that has the most space.
Probably until we redo high school boundaries.
Just clarify the, keeping it just for, keeping it the way it is? This year and beyond?
We would have the opportunity to evaluate it thoughtfully, but essentially, 91 at Eckstein, 92 at Jane Addams is no change.
So our only challenge that we're looking at is also to see if there's a transportation impact associated with this.
This, this was the basis for the, the idea of splitting the mid, splitting the difference and saying those students have the opportunity to opt in to Eckstein and Jane Addams, but they would not be limited, basically, they would have guaranteed opt-in rights, but they would not have transportation.
That's an equity issue then.
I'm, I'm seeing frowns on that one. Try in here. 91 to Eckstein, 92 to Jane Addams.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I think you're right in the numbers and the impact. The challenge, though, is if there's transportation needed for them, that becomes a bit of a challenge. And then I think some of the, the frowns are probably telling you it's, it'll be an equity issue as well for a small number of students.
I just want to be really explicit that this is not a point I'm comfortable just letting go, because it's not a last-minute thing. It was raised in 2013, it's been raised multiple times since then, it was raised as part of the boundaries discussion, and since in the last month, it's also been, the attention of, of staff and the board, and we have not risen to the level of addressing that concern, either with an amendment or a clear reason why we couldn't provide an amendment. And so I feel a responsibility to that community to do right by them.
So we're just trying to take a look at this, because I think, I mean, I think, I think you're correct in that it was an issue raised in 2013, and I think the solution was part of the growth boundary changes that were supposed to, that were being planned upon to kind of create that alignment. And so when those didn't happen this fall, it perpetuated the misalignment that the families are, have the concern about. So there was an initial solution to that, in that there was going to be alignment for those elementary schools into those middle schools, but now that's creating the continued dissonance. So it is hard to figure out this on the fly and figure out what the impact is.
I'm wondering if there's some kind of language we could say that this needs to be resolved and in some manner, and that, or it will be reviewed in some manner, and that we would vote on the student assignment plan with that caveat attached to it. I mean, I don't. By when, exactly? It's a good question.
And what fiscal impacts?
Okay.
So again, I'm looking around the table that collectively, we're the body, board and staff, that has not addressed this, and I feel a responsibility to the community to definitively address it. And if that definitively address it means, sorry, no, that's an op, that's, that's one possibility. I believe that to get there, we're going to have to propose an amendment and vote on it. And so I'm trying to understand, what is the, the most palatable?
The least awful?
The least awful, from a budget and a family service perspective, that does that work?
Director Blanford, did you want to weigh in?
I just want to say, I encourage you to do that. I, I wasn't looking forward to us getting to a point where we actually had to take a vote on this, because I don't have any language in front of me, and I don't have any analysis of the implications of what you're proposing. And so it would be very difficult for me to support it, just because of that deficit. I think if, if we have some analysis of the implications of this, it seems to me like it may be not a no-brainer, but something that's much more palatable, but at this point, it's not palatable at all.
Because we're talking about such a very specific issue, and I think that there's some more daylighting to be done on it in terms of identifying, for me in particular, any small pocket of student that is being bounced to a middle school and then not able to travel on with that new set of friends, is there any way we can look at this as a future tweak or not?
And if I might follow up, I have a question for general counsel. So if we vote on the student assignment transition plan tonight, got it, is there anything that prevents us from receiving more information and analysis and amending same in, say, two weeks?
No, legally, absolutely not. The only, the only thing I don't know is, as a practical matter with open enrollment starting and other planning going on, if, if that could hinder implementing a, a later amendment, but you could certainly come back in two weeks and, and amend it again, yes.
And don't we have the tools to address those families that are impacted by your potential amendment, to give them the heads up and, and to do a real bang-up job on community engagement for that? And, and by that time, be able to get the fiscal note that goes with?
It sounds like we've already heard from the community, at least to some extent, that.
Well, you know, I'm sorry.
From, from all 64 students in the.
Oh, okay, so there's 64 students we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't realize the number was that.
A majority, but just in the interest of time, I would like to make a motion, so that we can bring this to some level of conclusion, and that is that area 92, the, the number of students? 50, thank you. So the motion is that area 92 containing?
14.
14 students? Will attend Jane Addams, will be assigned to Jane Addams Middle School, and area 91, containing 50 students, will be assigned to Eckstein Middle School for the 2017-18 student assignment plan. Area 91 will attend Eckstein Middle School.
Clarification question, if I might? Does that imply then that we are giving transportation?
That would imply that they would follow all of the regular transportation rules based on walk zones.
Transportation provided, et cetera, even without a fiscal note?
Without a fiscal note.
Thank you.
So this, this is something, this, this becomes the point of discussion for now or for future, is the fiscal impact, and then it could be considered under budget discussions. You're talking about how to bring this up in the future. Future analysis could include those budget discussions.
And I think the group, from what I recall of somebody explaining to me, the group that ping-pongs is actually even a smaller subset in one of these, and that is the group that I'm most concerned about. So I would, if that can be identified, highlighted in some future conversation, and a potential fix to that, if it's a boundary redraw, something.
So did we get a ruling on my question from general counsel? That we can pass a student assignment plan, transition plan tonight without this amendment? And then we can come back after some serious, decent, robust community engagement, and if we can't hit 64 families, then, then we, we can?
Yeah, again, you can.
We absolutely can.
You can certainly come back and amend the plan.
Okay.
In a week or two weeks, or at, at any set period.
Okay, thank you.
Point of order, there's a motion, is there a second?
There, there hasn't been a second, that's right. So if there isn't a second, then the motion would die for lack of a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Anyone like to discuss or ask any more questions? I want to say that I do appreciate the conscientious effort on the parts of Director Burke and Geary to bring this up, and it has been somewhat frustrating to follow all the different pieces of the growth boundaries and student assignment plan. And I know the board has been asking a lot of follow-up questions on a lot of these things, and we haven't always got the answers right when we were hoping to get them, but I also know that this has been a massive work for staff. I, I tend to side with the, the logic of Director Harris on this one. I think doing this on the fly is not a good, good way to go. I think we're going to miss something. I'm also mindful of the fact that earlier in the evening, I was told that we shouldn't be doing what I was proposing just for 369 kids. So I mean, we need to be somewhat consistent in what we do, and we definitely need a fiscal analysis. So I do want to address what sounds like a persistent problem that's been known for a while, and I think bringing it in two weeks makes more sense. And so I will not be supporting your current amendment, but bring it back in two weeks with more detail, and I'll definitely look at it again. Are there any other questions or comments about this amendment? Okay, then, then we go to a roll. Ms. Ritchie?
Director Pinkham?
No.
Director Blanford?
No.
Director Burke?
Yes.
Director Geary?
No.
Director Harris?
Nope.
Director Petu?
No.
Director Peters?
No.
This motion did not pass at a six to one to zero vote.
Okay. I think it's time for us to vote now on the student assignment plan as amended. Transition plan for 2017-18. Ms. Ritchie, the roll call, please.
Director Blanford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Nope.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Petu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
This motion passed at a six, one, zero vote.
Thank you, everybody. I now call this meeting adjourned at 9:35.